Okay, I'll call to order the Newport Beach City Council Study Session for June 8th, 2008. May we have the roll call, please?
The record will reflect that Council members Rozansky, Daigle, and Webb are absent.
Okay. First item is current business. First item there is clarification of items on the consent calendar. Councilwoman Gardner?
Yes, number eight. Mark, I had a couple of questions just -- I'm assuming that they're there, but I'd like to have it clarified. For example, it talks about that the landscapers should be sure to clean off the algae, and I'd rather make sure that there's no runoff that creates the algae. They are keeping an eye on things like runoff as far as the --
That's correct.
And then, as far as the blowers, I know that we've not had a lot of success with trying to get away from them, but do we also -- is there anything in there about maintaining them properly so they're as quiet as possible?
There is. They have to be below that standard, so we try and enforce that.
Thank you.
Councilman Curry?
No items.
Councilman Hen?
Nothing.
Okay, and I have no items. So we'll go to our second current business item, which is the Buck Gully Fire Study.
Mr. Mayor and Council, I think we had this discussion about this same time last year when fire season was upon us and there were fires elsewhere in the county, and staff embarked on a study as to how best to take care of the growth that would cause a fire hazard, and it has taken a while in order to come back with a staff recommendation, but what we intend to do today is talk about what we consider to be one of the major fire concerns in the community, and talk about why we think it is a fire concern and what could be done about it. So we're asking direction from the city council today, not in the terms of a motion to take any specific action, but to move forward towards a specific action. So Steve Bunting is going to make the presentation, and it's probably going to take forty, forty-five minutes or something like that, so that's what you could expect.
I said go with three hours. I added more pictures. Mr. Mayor and Council, good afternoon. Steve Bunting, Fire Marshal, Fire Department. Last November, when I brought the fire code adoption to you, one of the questions that you had was, had we made any changes to the fuel modification or hazard reduction standards in there? At the time, even though it was November, there were quite a few brush fires going on in the state, and you were, of course, concerned. The answer was no. There were not any changes in that code adoption for 2007. We just carried forward what we had in the past, and what we had in the past was as a result of an agreement between a group called Friends of Buck Gully and City Council and the Fire Department, which had been put in place in about 1998, and we have been enforcing ever since. There's, of course, a lot of concern in the community when you look at Buck Gully. It doesn't look like it's very safe. That's our opinion as well, and the reason for that is the amount of brush that's -- is a result of the agreement we reached with Friends of Buck Gully, the amount of brush that's still left in the canyon. So when I left -- after I left the meeting, we started looking at other regulations in the state, and I -- as well as our own fuel modification regulations for the Newport Coast area, and I've settled on some that I think will solve the problem, and I want to get to that in my program today. But first, I want to kind of show you what the problem is. The three factors firefighters have to deal with are weather, topography, and fuel. Weather and topography, there's not much we can do. Fuel, there is something we can do about. We can clear it in advance, and that's exactly what hazard reduction is. It's fuel reduction. I apologize to those -- everybody that's seen this. I've shown these pictures about 100 times. This is Buck Gully in 1973. If you look in the middle of the gully, you can see the bottom. You can see the dirt. You can't see Morning Canyon over here, but you can see that all the way up, the dirt on the slope. This is a picture of Buck Gully today. The photo was taken about a year ago. It's grown in completely. This is a good shot of Morning Canyon. The difference between the two is Buck Gully goes all the way up to Newport Coast, which would allow fire to come down it and right into the canyon. Morning Canyon, on the other hand, is cut off at the head by the golf course, so short of a fire starting in it, it doesn't present quite the problem that Buck Gully does. When you get up the top of Buck Gully, this is a shot from Coast Highway, looking down towards the ocean, you see a lot of green vegetation. It looks green, but when you get down in there, when you get underneath it, it's a lot of dead vegetation underneath there. On a normal day with no Santa Ana winds, a fire in there would be a problem, but when you put Santa Ana winds for a couple of days before the fire and dry that brush out, and then put a fire underneath it, it'll heat that green shrubbery up in no time, and it'll burn just like it's any other combustible vegetation. The 100-foot arrow indicates what we're talking about today. The proposals I'm going to present to you today only deal with the first 100 feet behind the home. On the average, the property owner owns about 170 feet of canyon frontage -- I'm sorry, of canyon depth behind their home. It's a little less down at the bottom by the beach, and it's a little bit more up by the highway, but on the average, it's about 170. The Public Resources Code in California says that the owner of the property will take care of the 100 feet behind the structure. So that's where the 100 feet comes from, and that's what our regulations currently address, is the first 100 feet behind the house. So keep in mind, that's what we're talking about today. Our current regulations do have a requirement for separation of brush. It's only five feet, and prior to our meeting in November, we were doing that inspection on these properties every three years. What would happen, it was kind of the honor system, in the intervening three years, all the shrubs would grow back together. Now, these people, even though we only inspected it every three years, it was -- they were supposed to be keeping it clear themselves. Of course, nobody was, or very few were. So the shrubs would go back together because they really weren't spaced well enough to begin with. Now we inspect every other year, so if they're not keeping it clear themselves, we'll pick it up on our biannual inspection. There's no separation of trees in our current regulation. This was the deal that was made with Friends of Buck Gully. They didn't want to have to remove any trees, and this is where, with the shrubs and the trees, I really feel this is where our ordinance kind of falls down. This is a shot just to the right of the house with the bogan villia. It's just -- it's at the top of Buck Gully on the east side. I know you've all seen it, but this is very typical. This is very typical. We can go to upper -- the up coast side of it, down coast side of it, we'll see this all over. This is the problem with our ordinance, that there's no separation of trees required. Another shot, this is just below Fifth and Poppy. These are combustible trees. It's mostly eucalyptus trees, but these aren't necessarily the worst offenders. There's also a lot of trees and tree-form shrubs that grow right up, you know, within 10 feet of people's property. The requirement in our regulations now is that the trees be kept five feet from the property. Most of the other regulations I looked at were 10 feet. I want to talk about a couple of things today, so I want to go over some terms with you. A hazard reduction zone is the zone that applies to the older parts of Newport Beach. It's Buck Gully, Morning Canyon, parts of Newport Coast actually have some hazard reduction in them. We're not sure why. That's the way the county Fire Department set it up, but they're there. Mostly, the hazard reduction zone is maintained by the property owner in Newport Coast. It's HOA-maintained. We have 465 properties in the canyon, and those are -- we inspect half of those now every other year. I'm sorry, this is dark. It's actually -- it's lighter on the computer screen. I took this picture because these three homes, and this is probably up around Cortez and about Middle Buck on the east side, are really in pretty good shape, and what I wanted to show you is what a good hazard reduction zone looks like. And it's a shame the picture's dark, but what you would see is open space below the property, no trees growing up near it. The trees and shrubs that are there are pretty well spaced, and really, it goes from this house, this house, and that house. I wanted to get some other pictures. Here's one in Lower Buck that is also in very good shape, that would actually meet the proposed changes to my -- to our regulations. But I was a little bit disappointed, and that was about all I found. So I took a picture of my own backyard, which you can probably imagine is a little better than the standard. This is my slope right here, the green one. Myself and this neighbor work together. We keep our slopes nice and certainly in compliance. The neighbor on my right-hand side chooses to do nothing. He believes he lives in a fireproof house. He plants whatever he wants. The City of Laguna doesn't enforce vegetation regulations because they have a 100-foot wide goat path behind the homes, and they feel that that will take care of it. Maybe it will, maybe it won't. If you look right here, there's some open grates that provide ventilation for the underside of his house, and he planted a bush right next to it. So I think he took the fireproof in this right out of his house when he did that. So I've got rosemary on my own slope. I've got some myoporum shrubs on there that I keep low. My neighbor has rosemary as well. It's a very good plant. I keep my tree trimmed up three times the height of my neighbor's shrubs. He planted them there against my wishes, so I have to keep that tree limbed up, which, you know, is what the standard is. But anyways, I had to go to Laguna to get some pictures of some good stuff. The other zone we have in Newport Beach is the fuel modification zone, and that is primarily found in Newport Coast. It is also found in our rebuilt and remodeled homes in Buck Gully and Morning Canyon, because when they remodel, they have to convert their slope to fuel modification standard. Now, that still gets inspected. When we go back every other year to do our fuel -- our hazard reduction inspection, we -- their plans have been changed to reflect that they were changed to fuel modification. So over time, as remodels occur in those two canyons and they occur with some frequency, we're eventually going to have almost all fuel modification in there. So we'll have a mix. For a long time, we'll have a mix of hazard reduction and fuel modification. The width of a fuel modification zone is greater than the hazard reduction, which you remember was 100 feet. The width is zero, the back of the house, up to 170 feet, and there's five zones. The first zone's the A-zone, that starts behind the house, and it has to be a minimum of 20 feet wide. The A-zone is your standard ornamental vegetation. It's irrigated plants. As long as the plants are off our list, we don't over-regulate it. It's intended to be a wet zone. B-zone goes the next 50 out, and it's a little bit -- it's a little bit more dense. It's also irrigated. The way a fuel modification zone is intended to work is that the fire will blow into it, and as it approaches the homes, it'll simply run out of steam. It'll simply run out of fuel to burn. And theoretically, if the firefighters don't even show up, it should be a very small fire around the home, if any fire at all. That's how it's designed to work, if properly maintained. And again, the older parts, we're eventually going to get everybody, the older parts are converting. Here's a fuel modification zone. This is looking across San Joaquin Hills, and the white spots are actually canvassed. They were doing work on the zone. These go 170 feet, like I said, and these are maintained by the homeowners association. So it starts directly behind the house and goes out 170 feet. You've all seen Newport Coast. We're comfortable. It's going to work. The fires in the middle of this winter that were out in Irvine, I remember hearing on the radio, one of the battalion chiefs, or I'm sorry, one of the strike team leaders telling his crews, "Don't worry about that area. The fuel modification looks pretty good up there." And I thought, "That's pretty neat. That's a pretty good thing to hear." Firefighters are expected -- a single engine is expected to protect either three or four homes, because resources are so limited on those fires, so it's nice to have fuel modification and be able to spread your resources out even more. These are the fuel mods that are occurring in Buck Gully. Again, 170 feet from the back of the house. This is a rather unique fuel modification, but it's fuel modification nonetheless. If they hardscape, we let them include that in the zone. Swimming pools are included in the zone. We're just looking 170 feet out from the first combustible structure. If you turn around from those pictures and cross the canyon, the one on the left has been there a while. It has a fuel modification zone below it. It's hard to see with these trees here. It's misleading, but it's in good shape. This one is currently being worked on, and that slope will be fixed before the project is finished. I'm going to talk about the three different regulations that we have in our city. I don't want you to read this, because I'm going to pick out the highlights, but again, it's the hazard reduction zones, Buck Gully and Morning Canyon, fuel mod in Newport Coast, and the California State Fire Marshal Regulations, which apply to state responsibility areas. Now, these would be any homes or buildings that are in brush-covered land in state responsibility areas, so certainly the historic district in Crystal Cove would have to comply with these regulations. In Buck Gully, Morning Canyon, our hazard reduction guidelines currently require branch tips to not be within five feet of the residence. No separation is required between existing trees, and if you put new trees in, we ask that they be separated, mature branch tip to branch tip, 10 feet. We don't see a lot of new trees added. Just for your information, every piece of property in Buck Gully, Morning Canyon, we have on a CAD drawing, and that's our baseline. When a homeowner adds a tree or bushes to it, if it meets our standards, we add it to the CAD. If it doesn't meet our standards, we give them a letter asking them to remove it. So we know when new trees go in. So that's the hazard reduction standard. That's what we have today. In the fuel mod, you start to see the difference. Branch tips can't be -- whoops, I'm sorry. Branch tips can't be within 10 feet of the structure. It was five feet over here. And they have to be separated by other trees by three times the width of the mature crown or 30 feet, whichever's greater. So we're starting to see trees be separated by 30 feet, branch tip to branch tip. Over here, and these, mind you, are pretty new regulations by the state fire marshal. I kind of like them. If you have greater than 40 percent grade, which most of our slopes in Corona del Mar are, most of those slopes tend to be about 100 percent. This is an example of a 40 percent grade, and I think all of you that have been out to Buck Gully know that it really, it looks more like this. So it's either flat behind their homes, or it drops, you know, to 100 percent grade. But the state fire marshal says, for greater than 40 percent grade, they want 30 feet of separation from mature branch tip to branch tip. And I looked at the San Diego City Regulations, which are also new, and they went with very similar to this, 30-foot separation, branch tip to branch tip. You note that the state fire marshal has three zones. They start off with 0 to 20 percent, 10-foot separation, 20 to 40, 20, and 40. I actually am recommending that we take this one out. We really don't have anything that falls into that category. Property, like I said before, either tends to be flat, certainly no greater than a 20 percent grade, or as you step off the back to the slope, 100 percent grade. I really don't see the need. You've got to keep in mind that the state fire marshal is regulating ranches in the wildland, camps, a lot of places where they have different grades. So that's the trees. Shrubs, we have the same thing, and I'll break them out for you. In Buck Gully and Morning Canyon, the shrubs have to be 10 feet apart if they aren't on our fire-resistant list. No separation is required for plants on the fire-resistant list, and there's no maximum limits of the number of shrubs that can be on a hillside. Let me back up for a minute. Shrubs are 18 inches to four feet. After four feet, they become shrub -- tree-form shrubs, and we treat them just like trees. So shrubs, 18 to four inches, 18 inches to four feet, I'm sorry. And if they want to add any new shrubs, they have to be off our fire-resistant plant list. For the fuel modification, it's quite a bit better. The most shrubs can be in the A-zone is 25 percent of the total vegetation mass. And on the slopes in the B-zone, which is generally from the top of the slope down, a maximum of 50 percent of the vegetation mass. We don't have a lot of regulations on separation, but we do require that -- we do limit the amount of mass that you have on those.
Steve?
Yes?
What is vegetation mass?
That's the total amount of vegetation on the slope. So your ground cover, your shrubs and your trees, the most the ground cover -- I'm sorry, the most the shrubs could be would be 50 percent of that mass. So if you had shrubs, what you would have around it is ground cover less than 18 inches. That would make up the rest, or trees.
Okay.
Okay, so it's the total amount of vegetation on the hillside. In the state fire marshal's regulations, again, for greater than 40 percent grade, which is where most of our problem is, they must be separated by six times the height of the mass, the height of the shrub, I'm sorry. So again, a three-foot-tall shrub would have to be separated by 18 feet to the next shrub. We think that's good. We think that's a good separation. So these are my recommendations today. For trees, I'd like to recommend that we change our ordinance, our regulations, for 0 to 20 percent grade, 10-foot of separation from the branch tips, and greater than 20 percent grade, 30 feet of separation. And I'd also like to change trees not within 10 feet of the structure.
Steve?
Yes?
So we want the greater separation on the greater grade because of the fire?
Yeah, because the flame lengths are longer coming up the hill. Now, I went out last week, and I looked at the canyon, and I tried to do a rough estimate of the number of trees I thought would probably be required to be removed by this, and it's probably about 2/3 of the trees within that 100-foot zone behind the houses. About 2/3 of them. For shrubs, 18 inches --
Steve, excuse me. Can you go back to that last one?
Yes.
I had a question. That no trees within 10 feet of a structure?
Yeah, so no --
Was that just from the back?
Yeah, from the back of the structure. All of these regulations are from the back of the structure facing the slope. Yeah, so no, it's written wrong, I'm sorry, but it's no portion of the tree within 10 feet of the structure. And again, our current regulation is five feet, which isn't really suitable. For shrubs, 18 inches to four feet tall, on a 0 to 20 percent grade, I'd like to see them separated by twice the height of the shrub, and on 20 percent grade, I'd like to see them separated by six times the height of the shrub. This is consistent with the state fire marshal's regulations. It's consistent with what San Diego City just did. I think it's a prudent change, and I really think it would help the area down there. It would help what we've identified as the problem. And once again, you know, until we start to reduce the fuel, we can't reduce the hazard. It's really the only thing we have. We can harden buildings. We can require dual-pane glass and non-combustible exterior structures, and no vents, you know, quite a few things that the building code now requires, but still, without the brush, without the brush, the fire has a way to travel up the slope, over the houses, and into the neighborhoods behind it, and that's our biggest concern.
Steve, I think that something that needs to be talked about here is, we're not just talking, though, in terms of fire, about the houses that ring Buck Gully. I mean, I think that's because I think that's a concern that I'm -- I mean, I think when I first heard about the fire in Buck Gully, I'm thinking, "Well, if those people don't care, are willing to put up with the danger, then that's okay. That's their risk." But from my understanding is, it's a much greater risk than that. The concern is that the fire, particularly in Old Corona del Mar, would spread.
Yeah. Back in the '90s, when we tried this after the fire in '93, they want -- the homeowners down there wanted to indemnify the city, to say that, you know, let them burn, they'll insure themselves, but that's not the problem. The problem is, it won't just burn down their homes. It'll spread to the village of Corona del Mar. We'll lose quite a bit of it. This is the fire in Laguna Beach, and there were actually two fires in Laguna that day. The one in the green area started at about noon time and moved down into Emerald Bay that afternoon. About 3 o'clock in the afternoon, the fire, the wind changed, the onshore started, and the fire jumped across the canyon. At this point, I believe about 50 homes had been lost. When the fire jumped the canyon, there were 191 homes lost in this zone right here. Those 191 homes weren't on the canyon rim. Very, very few, very low percentage of them were on the canyon rim. The fires, once the homes started on the rim, started burning, it just simply spread unchecked into the homes, you know, in the rest of the area in there, and ended up burning 191 of them. We've got -- and here's exactly what we're talking about. In the canyon, we've got a lot of dense trees and shrubs. If you go back out to Hazel, about 5 percent of the homes on Hazel still have wood shingle roofs, and they're nice when they're not on fire, but when they're on fire, they lift, they actually fly with the fire currents, they'll travel quite a ways. And then on the next street behind them is the eucalyptus trees on Poppy. And after that, we're off to the races. That fire would be in Corona del Mar. So there's the problem. It's exactly what we're talking about. Our concern is that fire coming out of the gullies, out of the two canyons, and spreading into the adjacent homes, and absolutely overwhelming our resources. We have eight fire engines in Newport Beach. It would take us up to an hour to get the next 20 closest fire engines, and it could be an hour after that to start getting strike teams into our city, and two hours is too late. Mr. Jeffries and I were just talking about the residential care for the elderly facility at the top of Lower Buck Gully, and the amount of manpower that it's going to take for us to evacuate that shingle-covered structure. That's manpower that can't be used to fight the fire. Our first concern is, you know, life safety, and we have to get those people out. So it's a concern for us. But our concern is that fire spreading to the village of Corona del Mar. So that's all I have. I think what I'd like to know is, of course, I'd love to know your opinion. Am I on the right track? Would you like me to come back with an ordinance, something the public can discuss? I'm open to direction.
Yes. No, I do think that this is such a -- I know how frustrating it must be for people who live on Buck Gully. I mean, I'm a tree person, and I've seen some of those homes, and I think, "Oh, how lovely. They're looking through the tree and through the canyon and everything, and that's so rustic, and it's so rare in our world today." But we have to be thinking in terms of the overall safety, so I really would like to see something come back as soon as possible, so that we can have a full -- we'll have, I'm sure, some discussion today, but to have a full public discussion about it, because I just think this is too important.
Any other comments?
I completely agree with Councilmember Gardner about this. We really have a serious fiduciary responsibility to take action about this, a responsibility that extends to virtually all the homeowners of Newport Beach. I was curious about something, really two issues, Steve. You said 100 feet, so you're saying it's not necessary to go to 170 feet?
No, it is. That's Plan B.
Well, so let's hear a little more about that, and then I have another question.
Well, Plan B's expensive, and Plan B's going to involve quite a bit of work. Whether we use goats or whether we use manpower, it involves dealing with a lot of regulatory agencies. My preliminary estimate on that by our consultants is approximately $350,000, regardless of which direction you go. It is something that we need to look at next.
Why does this involve so much more?
Because of all the regulatory agencies, the Coastal Commission, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, Fish and Game, everybody's got their hand in that canyon. And the study that I had done identified all of the regulatory agencies that will have to have, you know, reports produced for them, and will have to make input, have to give us input.
So it's $350,000 just to get through the process you're talking about?
No, I'm sorry. That's the -- that's to get through the regulatory process and the startup costs for the first year. After that, it'll go down quite a bit. It'll go down, it'd be down significantly if we used goats, a little bit less if we did it by hand.
But the 350, what I'm getting at is, does the 350 include clearing out all the things that need to be cleared out?
Yes, it does. It does. Just to give you an idea, the trees are about $1,000 apiece, and there's a lot of trees in the bottom of that canyon.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And you did not speak in your presentation about the speed with which -- let's assume we adopt new regulations quickly, within a couple of months, a month or two, whatever it takes. You didn't just address how fast the regulations would have to be implemented by the homeowners. In other words, I'm assuming that you're talking about with these regulations, in effect, retroactive implementation. I mean --
No, I don't expect to hit this fire season. We've already started inspections on them. Excuse me, we're well into the inspection period. I think with the public hearings and then meeting with the residents to identify which trees need to be removed, I think that we need an entire winter to do that. I think that would -- I think that would be reasonable to give the residents that kind of time. Some of them are -- it's going to be very expensive for some of them, and a lot of work on our part. We'll have to actually meet with every single homeowner, meet with them, and identify which trees need to be removed, and --
But we're not talking about delaying the effectiveness of this until the next time it's remodeled or it's rebuilt?
No, no, no.
This would all go into effect at the point it's --
Yes. By next -- by our first inspection of next year, which is this period right now that we're in right now. So that's when I would like to have it in place. I'd like to have the trees removed by then, so I think letting them have all winter to do it is reasonable.
You know, I understand what you're saying from the point of view of the homeowners, but from the point of view of the risk to the community, I have difficulty with that, waiting that long.
It's a tremendous --
For another fire season to go to be upon us. It's already upon us, obviously, up and down the state, and so --
I'll do whatever you ask.
Well, what kind of compliance are we seeing? I mean, we have a hazard reduction zone. How much in compliance are we with that?
Last year, we had our worst compliance ever. We had 35 homes that went to final notice, which for us says, "That's it. You've missed your deadline. We're coming Monday morning to take your plants out." So last year, we had thirty-five of them, and as you, I don't know if you recall, we were in the middle of fire season. We had fires going all over the state of California last year. It couldn't have been more on people's mind, and we had thirty-five homeowners refusing to comply with our requests, which we think are reasonable, you know, beyond reasonable. So thirty-five of them last year, it's going to be very difficult. Back in nineteen ninety-eight, Friends of Buck Gully marshaled all the residents. They far outnumbered the residents that were in favor of these regulations. The residents in favor of the regulations presented us with a petition with five names on it. So I think, I don't know if it's changed very much down there, I would hope it would. That's a few more years of seeing neighborhood after neighborhood after neighborhood burned down in the state of California. I hope people have changed their minds a little bit.
So have we started our compliance checks for this year?
Yes, we have. We've just completed their first inspection.
And how?
They've got, they have thirty more days approximately to-
But I mean, what kind of compliance are we seeing this year?
Oh, it's too early to tell.
Oh, okay.
It's too early to tell. We'll know after about thirty days.
Oh, okay.
From the early eighties to the mid-nineties, I owned a home on lower end of Milford on Morning Canyon. And it was my understanding, when I owned that property, that I was responsible for maintaining the property all the way from the top of the slope down to the bottom of the canyon where my property line ended.
Well, we try and fool people.
Has something changed now that people are not responsible for maintaining and keeping it all, keeping it all cleared out, all the way to the bottom, as opposed to just to the hundred-foot level?
No, as long as I can remember, and I was the deputy fire marshal about fifteen years ago, it's always been a hundred feet. The Public Resources Code specifically says a hundred feet. To my knowledge, we've never pushed for more than that.
So you're not talking about taking these canyons back to what they were in nineteen seventy-three at all, then?
Actually, as part of Plan B, I do, I am.
So Plan B would take them back to that first picture?
Yeah, I would very much like to see all, that's all non-native invasive vegetation down there. I would like to see that removed and be replaced with a lot of the native vegetation. A lot of native vegetation has some fire resistance to it, and there's a lot that we can select. That three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars included some replanting, some reforestation down in those areas.
And who bears the cost of that?
Well, I'm not sure. That's something that we'll have to discuss at a later date. It seems like a lot of money for the homeowners to bear. I don't know how the council will feel about that.
But Steve, just to dovetail in on that question, I mean, the first hundred feet, then, is that to the homeowner?
The homeowner pays for the first hundred feet. There's no disputing that. We need to discuss further who pays for, you know, Plan B.
Any other questions?
Well, I for one would encourage you to come back as rapidly as possible with an ordinance that includes both Plan A and Plan B, and a staff report that gives us some feeling for the length of time and the cost associated with that to both the homeowners and to the city, if there's some cost that's obviously the purview of the city.
I can, excuse me, but I can get back to you very quickly with an ordinance that will take care of the first hundred feet, and let the homeowners start to work on that for next fire season. It would take me quite a bit longer to finish the hundred to the hundred-and-seventy foot. It involves dealing with a lot of regulatory agencies in the state of California, and it will bog down the hazard reduction, the ordinance changes to hazard reduction. I would ask that I be able to separate them.
Well, can you produce an ordinance that deals with both Plan A and Plan B, but allows for different implementation periods for Plan A and Plan B?
Possibly.
But if you can.
I encourage you to do that.
Robin's nodding that I possibly can.
Right, but if-
I would like to see as comprehensive a view of this as possible.
Yeah.
I'm sure the other council members have a view of this, but for my part-
I want to leave you thinking that if we can adequately deal with the first hundred feet, we're taking care of a big part of the problem. If we have a fire in the canyon and it has difficulty getting through that last hundred feet, we've gone a long way to taking care of the problem. Ultimately, we need to take care of the entire canyon, but we have a lot of faith with the fire department that if we can get that first hundred feet straightened out, we'll be in pretty good shape.
Councilman Curry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd be interested in hearing some of the reaction from the residents as well on this, but I will say, we spend a lot of time focused on tsunamis and earthquakes and all kinds of other disasters, but as I understand it, Stephen, I think you'd probably agree with this, the greatest single threat that our community faces in terms of a natural catastrophe is a fire in Buck Gully that spreads into the community. That's the most serious problem that faces our community, and the one that would cause the greatest amount of damage and displacement were to get out of control. I think I'm right in that, all right?
Yeah, I think you're right, and the likelihood of it occurs seasonally, every single year.
So it really does merit, I think, the full attention of the city to try and focus on a solution that minimizes the risk of that kind of conflagration in Newport Beach.
When you say the difference between the hundred and the hundred-and-seventy feet, that's, you're basing the hundred-and-seventy feet on the assumption that that's the average distance that a lot goes to?
Yeah, that's just a number I use because it's average.
Okay.
But it would be to the end of their property, the bottom of the creek.
Right. Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open it for public comments.
My name is George Jeffries. I'm concerned about this issue, and I believe that Fire Marshal Bunting has dealt comprehensively with the whole subject, so I'm only going to add one minor thing that happens to be before you right now. The city maintains streets on Hazel and Poppy, which stand my estimate, seventy-five feet tall, eucalyptus, highly flammable. I love trees just as everyone loves trees, but in this situation, the city is part of the problem. If the fire comes up the slope and jumps over the house, or gets into the roofs that are made of wood, and then hit those eucalyptus trees, you know, in a wind blowing fifty-five miles an hour with embers going laterally at forty feet per second, that represents an awful lot of fuel. I'm not saying take out the trees. I personally would suggest, without knowing more, that they should be lowered and thinned on a regular basis to be consistent with the fire maintenance responsibilities that the city is urging its residents to follow.
Thank you.
My name is Larry Alpert. I live on Morning Canyon in the Short Cliffs community. On one side, Morning Canyon, it runs all the way down Morning Canyon itself, and the other side, Buck Gully. So I'd say that our community really has a substantial amount of homes that, you know, sort of in the middle. A question for the chief, is there anything that's natural in there now that could create a fire, or would it just be the fact that there's so much dry brush that's in there that a fire that would come down would then consume all of the other fuel that's there?
Fires are either set or start accidentally. So I don't know of anything natural that would start a fire in Morning Canyon, other than someone getting in there, kids playing with matches, or an arsonist or something. There's no high-voltage lines. Clearly, a house starting on fire could cause fire to spread into the canyon and set other homes on fire, so.
That ten-foot easement that you suggest, is that from the back of the house or from where the canyon sort of begins?
Distance from the trees to the house?
Yeah, yeah.
On the back of the house.
Right.
Yeah, we're only concerned with the side of the house that's facing the slope.
Okay. Also, you had mentioned a list of fire-resistant plants. Do you have a copy of such a list that's available?
It's available on our webpage, and it's separated by plant type, scientific name, common name. We have it three different ways on our webpage.
Okay. Well, I would bring this to our homeowners' association to find out what we can do creatively. We have a pretty active cert team that's in there as well, so certainly anything that would create any difficulty as far as fire or preventing anything coming along that way. So, thank you very much.
My name is Stanley Behrens. I live about three doors from the retirement home on Hazel. The first thing on trees that you mentioned, I think there should be a limit at the height of the trees in Buck Gully. For example, on the right of me, there's a eucalyptus tree growing, and there are four houses, five houses in a row that are all wood. I think in five minutes, they'd be, in a high wind, they'd be taken down. The other thing is, I'm a hundred percent for whatever the chief wants to do on this hillside, because it's a disaster waiting to happen.
Thank you.
Mr. Behrens has an exemplary yard, as he described. It's in excellent condition. I don't know of any regulation, I've never come across one that deals with the height of the tree. It seems like they're always approaching it from the ground cover, prevent the lathering from the ground cover to the shrubs to the tree. I haven't found anything that deals with the height, but I share his concern. It does seem like you have these towering trees that are more susceptible to spread fire into the neighborhood.
Just because it's never been done before doesn't mean we can't do it.
There's some pretty unnatural-looking trees, too, and that would look kind of strange.
I live in Laguna Beach, and I have the benefit of a nice hundred-foot-wide goat path behind my home. I think I've explained this to you before. The goats are brought in, and they're in one-acre pens, because they're charged, the city is charged by the acre. So the herders will set up a one-acre pen, move the goats into it. While the goats are feeding, they set up an additional pen next to it, and they move the goats into that when they're done. So you can regulate the amount of vegetation that's eaten by the amount of time the goats are left in that pen. You can actually fence areas off with sensitive habitat, you can protect that from the goats. In cases, the study that we had done had some recommendations for keeping the goat waste out of the waterway in the center of Buck Gully. So there's lots of things you can do with goats. They need to be purged between habitats. The bottom of Buck Gully is riparian habitat, it's precious, but we don't want to spread it to the other parts of Buck Gully. So the goats would have to be fed seedless hay for a day or so, and then moved up to another area. It's, we're not just moving the goats into the wildland and telling them to chew away. Although my very first call on this, after I became fire marshal several years ago, was a woman that wanted to buy a goat and just chain him up on her hillside. It was costing her, as I recall, eight thousand dollars every three years to stay in compliance with our regulations, and she thought a goat would be far less expensive.
Any other comments? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I did have one other very quick question. We've been talking about Buck Gully. I'm assuming these regulations you're talking about would also be applicable to Morning Canyon.
Yeah, that's a good question. They're also applicable to Morning Canyon, they're applicable to the hazard-reduction areas that are in Newport Coast, kind of mystery area to us. And also, something else the county did to us that we wouldn't have done, they let the A-zone start from the top of the slope. So the slope goes up, and then they have a twenty-foot A-zone from the top of the slope back, and then, if you have a fifty-foot lot-wide backyard, then you have thirty feet of unregulated space behind your house. Well, that falls under the hazard reduction regulations. So the county made it very difficult on us when they did that. L.A. County, Newport Beach, San Diego County, they all start at the back of the house. The A-zone starts at the back of the house and goes out. For some reason, Orange County does this quirky thing where they start at the top of the hillside, go twenty feet back, and that's the end of the A-zone, and then the homeowner can do or plant whatever he wants in that zone. So these regulations we're talking about are also going to apply to that intervening zone in Newport Coast between the home and the start of the A-zone. So it's going to affect a lot of people more than just the homeowners in Buck Gully and Morning Canyon.
Okay, Steve, now I'm totally confused, because I thought the people in Newport Coast were governed by the fuel-modification zone.
They are, but they have that intervening zone that's, they're, number one, they're adjacent to canyon property, and they have an intervening zone that's unregulated by the fuel modification. So our code draws them into the hazard-reduction guidelines.
Okay, so would you not say, then, that the hundred-and-seventy feet or whatever that distance is, that is, that's in the fuel-mod zone, would be a mitigation to the trees and-
No, because they can plant, in that intervening zone, they can plant trees that aren't on our list. Unless we draw them into the hazard-reduction guidelines, they can plant whatever combustible trees or vegetation they want in that intervening zone. It was a terrible oversight by county fire to allow that. They should have started, the zones should start at the back of the home.
So we're really talking about a lot more people being affected, and a lot more properties being affected than there is-
Yeah.
-Morning Canyon and Buck Gully.
Well, although it'll affect a lot of the properties, I'm not sure how difficult it's going to be a lot of them, because a lot of them don't have a lot of combustible plants in that intervening zone. We discovered one homeowner that had literally ringed their house with olive trees, which are not acceptable. I'm sorry, was going to ring their house with olive trees. That's how we found out about it. They applied for a helicopter permit to bring the olive trees in. So, you know, it does go on, and that's something, you know, it wouldn't be good to allow.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Bloud, is there enough direction from the council on this one?
Yes, I think there is good direction, Mr. Mayor, and, you know, I apologize for the way that this study session was advertised and the timing of it, because it causes you some downtime yourself as far as the rest of the afternoon.
Okay. I'll call for any public comments on any items not on the agenda. Okay, seeing none, we'll adjourn to close session.